I'm just, um, here recording, so, meeting of your own audio and the C D B G.
Ready with all our live videos that we're doing?
Yep, everything is on.
All this meeting will list, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, moment of silent reflection for the recent passing of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Ginsburg. Thank you, please have a seat. Roll call.
Karlovic.
Here.
Right here.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Precious.
Here.
Ister.
Um, I'll make a motion to include resolution 2023-8 for the C D C O G that apply 2020 to be included with this agenda as well.
Brechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Precious.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Alright, this meeting's now adjourned for public hearing.
Alright, thank you very much. We're here to have the final public hearing for your double business leader 2021 C D B G entitlement program. You are allocated $306,171 this year. The council chose projects, the somewhere ecological or education park for $58,000. The Sussex Way Avenue Stormwater and Sewer Separation, $193,071. Administration is $55,100. So these projects may require future C D B G funding to agree either reverse local or general funds. The commitment of any future C D B G funding will be incorporated in the city's three-year income plan. And it may impact future C D B G funding considerations. You have the resolution to apply in front of you that you just handed out at your agenda this evening. And at this time, I would ask if there's any public comment on the project that was selected for 2020 C D B G funding.
So just to clarify for the, you know, the title of the, the car project itself, it's, it's actually sweet. It's the somewhere wetland.
What is that? It's a beach. And the surveys for the Sussex Way Avenue project are complete. Thank you, Jody, for her help for getting those done. And it does qualify, so you're good for the alumni there for that part. Um, at this point, no, there's no public comment, we can adjourn the public hearing and you can go back to your regular meeting.
And when does the city look forward to having these, uh, the funding for next year?
Probably more. And then, of course, nothing starts until we do the environmental review, which is another 30 to 90 days, 10 days.
For, for all the projects?
Yes, both of these are new projects, so both need environmental review. Probably looking at getting started on actually doing anything next summer, June.
Alright, any, is there any comments, um, regarding the public hearing? Alright, so the public hearing.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on the agenda items only at this time?
I don't see anyone on the Zoom indicating they want a comment.
Alright, um.
Alright, under new business, since the council did, uh, agree and voted to add this item to the agenda, the resolution, uh, to apply for the 2020 C D B G entitlement grant, uh, as described by Jamie Schrader. The projects as listed there, somewhere wetland ecological and educational park, the Sussex Way Avenue Stormwater and Sewer Separation. Then there are also the administrative piece. Reese.
Yes.
Precious.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
So this is the professional and technical services agreement for the, um, the home program phase five that is administered by C D C O G. Terry Provost is on the Zoom and she can explain a little bit more about this. Terry?
Thank you, Jody. Good afternoon, evening, council. Uh, in front of you, you have a professional and technical services agreement, the mirrors the agreement you saw back in late 2019. Um, this agreement does not change any of the line items for delivery, which include, they range from intake to rehab management, lead management and clearance and the risk assessment, the furnace and electrical inspections, the radon inspections, the labor services, and then environmental review services. Those numbers all reflect what the 2018 numbers reflected. The only. Sorry about that, I think there was some feedback. Um, the only differences you will see based on your last agreement with C D C O G for housing rehab services will be the administration and technical assistance oversight and intake fees. Those have increased along with, not the percentage has not increased, they can't exceed 6%, but, uh, 2019 in your most recent contract is for, for half a million dollars and not $300,000. So those numbers are different, but they go in line with the 6% administration fee for the grant program. All of the monies paid under this contract are through the, uh, home program, which runs through the Department of Community and Economic Development. There are no general fund monies that are used pay for C D C O G's administrative services. Are there any questions?
None from council.
Precious.
Yes.
Ister. Karlovic.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
Alright, so now we need to move on to the city administrator position itself. And I suppose that we discussed the actual job description. Um, Chris, you had a couple comments if you want to open this up.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna go back. I don't want to let what Jody said in the last meeting kind of go and recognize and just move forward without reflecting, I guess. So, I appreciate you coming with the information that you shared with everyone. Obviously, I think from the very beginning, there was a miscommunication between all of us and you on specific duties as listed within what your job description were, what the contract said, what the job description said. And unfortunately, I think that led to issues that were just unresolved and unrepairable. So I've spoken with you since then, I've always obviously appreciated what you've done, I think you've moved us forward. But I've also spoken to you and said that there's no changing what's been said. So, um, I think on our end, one of the major things that we did that set the, the issues from the beginning was the contract that we had put in place for Jody sort of contradicted the job description. Basically, it said, the job description left things as allowable by third-class city law, and the job description put Jody in charge of, um, day-to-day operations of the city. Uh, it said right in there. And what, one thing we've all had disagreements over throughout the entire time during the years, what does that mean? You know, and what my thought of what day-to-day operations was, was different from, from what yours was and different from what Jim's was. You know, we could never really agree, I think that left Jody kind of in the middle of all of that. So, I think moving forward, the job description that we put in place overall, it was set up to be, this is not vague, but it was the leave open where council members still could make decisions as they deem necessary. But then the contract went out. So my thought was to just make a couple changes to the job description. But I don't think you can make changes to just the city administrator job description without looking at the city clerk's job description. I think they go hand in hand sometimes. And then my thought would be to do that, open up the position, advertise and see what comes in, and then meet again to come up with a new contract to make sure that we don't make the same errors we made this time. Because I think, I've talked to every single one of you individually, and everyone sees a need for the position. There's no one that say, ah, just get rid of it. It's just, it didn't work out the way that was intended to from the beginning. You know, you just have to move forward. But I think this, the, the progress that, the projects that are in place, the economic development projects that Jody started, the partnership forum, the ordinances that have passed, that kind of stuff can't go unnoticed, and we can't also not have that moving forward. So, on the administrator's job description, very basic, the only thing. So, number one, my only recommendation on the first one was, it says, "The city administrator shall be the goodwill ambassador." Just change that to a goodwill ambassador, because it says the same thing on the city clerk's, it's the first one, the city clerk's job description as well. There's no need, they both can't be good goodwill ambassadors for the city, they both handle complaints, they both, you know, see things coming in. So, I think to change that. Joel, do you have a copy of the description in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so number three and number eight, I don't even know if this wording needs to be added in there. But one of the things I think, again, where there were issues was the, each council person by third-class city law has the right to make the decision within an apartment.
Right.
But we weren't sure what that meant as far as what the contract said. So, if we added a line at the end of number three and number eight that just said, "Subject to approval of council department head," is that contradicting what's already said in there?
No.
Or do you think that would add value to that?
Hang on, let me set, write it out so you can.
Because then I think, when it comes back to the contract time, it's basically creating, we said it in reverse. So with Jody's contract, it was more, if there was a disagreement, it came to council. And Jody made the decision, if council disagreed, council had to vote to overturn that decision. When in reality, it probably should have been the other way. Oh, we passed as it was, it was. We know going forward, that's probably the way that we can move, make it worse. Uh, so that's what I would add to number three and number eight, it's just, well, I'd say it says, "Subject to approval of council department."
Yep.
Number 12, um, just adding in, working with department heads and supervisors at the beginning of the decision. So where it says, "Developed employment agency training programs." Just so wherever a department head feels they need to be involved in that, they can be involved in that. They don't think they need to be involved in that, they don't have to be involved in that. Number 14, just adding in a line at the end, in absence of city clerk, because it's in the city clerk's job description to handle the agenda and things like that, so this would be just in absence.
But I would be careful with that, because it also says about attending the council. And the city administrator should attend the council.
As required, so, and we would say, always a required, and you know, but that's what the contract would say. So we can put that, and that was in Jody's contract with that. And then number 18, just adding in at the end where it says, "Write in, manage grants." Just adding in, "Or oversee the progress and expectations of a grant manager as hired and approved by council." So that way, if they're like right now, we have a great hand to hire, the city administrator, as Jody does now, would oversee that person. If there was no grant manager, then it would be the duty of the administrator to do that, that job, do the grant application. So with that said, you go back and into the city clerk one. And Jolene, I'm gonna, because I know there's things on here that you, we talked about, that you were gonna look at at the weekend, things that you do that we, I didn't put on here, so I'll ask at the beginning, you can just listen to those one. But the only things that I would change on there is number one, it's the same thing. Shall be a goodwill ambassador and not be goodwill ambassador. Number 16, um, Jolene does this right now, assist in, in, just erase that as, as it is, where it says, "Research grant opportunities and assistant grant writing." Instead, change that to, "Assist in the collection of necessary documents and files required when applying, when applying for grants." So that's currently what you're doing.
Yes, and then I would like to have the backend administration of the grant where I have to gather all the information for the auditors.
Yep, that, that would be number 17. Assistant administration of grants and funds, maintain grant management files as required by contracts and all. You didn't do any further wording in that?
As far as the financial records, shouldn't that be in the Department of Accounts and Finance too? Can you keep those records and have them available for the auditors? Jolene keeps all of the contractual agreements, paperwork that's involved, uh, the file related to the grant. But I don't think she should be the responsible person for the financial documents prepared for the auditors.
Okay, well, that would be removed then, just basically.
Well, at the same time, in the packet of the grant, all those financial statements, payments, so it should be in the packet itself. And Kevin should have a backup, or actually, that might be the backup, Kevin. But in that, so when you pull that folder out for grant, whatever it may be, everything should be in that folder.
Right, and as part of the record keeping piece.
Right, so right now you're requesting that from, or you're the one gathering all?
Yeah.
So that, I think, would have to change. It would be that the treasurer's office would keep all that stuff, and Jolene would just request copies of those records to keep in the file, right?
But I would think it'd be easier for the auditors or down the road if there's a question, and pull that file out. Everything should be in that file folder.
That's what I'm saying, but we'd pull that from the treasurer's office, right?
But Jolene should have it in her folder too.
Right now, it's very difficult. With speed being part of grants, catchel being part of grants, everybody being part of grants when it's the beginning of it. I have no clue what's going on, what's going to be applied for, I have nothing. And then until we get approved, there's no records in my office. And just no one's communicating. So then, when payments are coming in for applications or anything like that, or being sent out, I have no records of that. So then to the auditors, I'm sitting there, hold on, let me find it, let me find it. Then they ask me for capital assets and I have to handle with the construction and everything. Payments come out of the treasurer's office, invoices come in from different companies, I do not see. And then I'm the one taking the time to search for all these assets that never came through my office because everyone just started working around keeping the files in my office.
Well, that's it, I think any grants are written in-house, like the police department. If the paperwork should be kept back.
So just basically, we need to put in a, a system, and that's not part of the job description, but we need to put in a system in place of all city departments to follow that, if you're gonna write a grant anywhere, you need to start the application and Jolene needs to know about it. And she needs to have a file and report, so that way all files can be, all records can be kept in. But the job description itself would just say, "Assist in the collection of necessary documents and files required when applying for grants and administration grants," correct?
And then I do the draws for C D C O G when they do their invoices and I have to approve the payments and, or registry project for the home project. So.
Would that be something different in the job description, you think, or you think that would fall under that?
I think that, um, she's involved with, the record keeping is the main thing. And so, part of that record keeping is keeping a record of invoices, the payment approvals, and processing them. So I think that the process itself needs to be, uh, looked at and agreed upon. Or, or, yeah, how it's gonna come through, how it's gonna move through the city clerk's office. So she does have a role in the grant management. So I think an assist with grant management is it, and record keeping.
Yeah, ministry.
But I think internally, we need to look at standardizing process, we need to.
So we need to create policy for standardized for all departments.
And that would make sense.
Right, and whose responsibility it is when the auditors are asking for information, um, to track down payments of invoices. I think primarily that should be this, the treasurer's office, but if there's something that's, that's not clear, the assistance of the city clerk and the records that she has to help resolve any issues.
So outside of this, I think that's something that has to happen. And Jolene and Jody have, you know, any input that you would want to start that conversation with. And whoever you think needs to be in that conversation, let us know, and then we can, what could be to put that process in place, if that makes sense? So, yeah, so we could, and then the only one that I would change on there is number 21. In the administrator's job description, it talks about being the, basically the human resources manager, handling discipline and things like that. I just put, instead of managing the resource activities, just change that to assist city administrator, administrator in human resource activities, but still keeping, initiating, maintaining, securing employee personnel files. Because I think that, that would be important to still do within, in a clerk's office. But then assisting as needed by the administrator.
Correct, like, I would say that the city clerk is the primary for human resource management administration, right? But when it comes to disciplinary processes, and that would involve the, the city administrator.
And that's what it says in the, in the job description.
That should be it.
So that's what, those are the changes that I would make personally, and I guess I have any others that you've seen up right now. Basically, I think off of those, you, you're able to at least open the position, have the badge position, see what comes in, and then we set a deadline. Those, the jury's here, April 14th, January, probably need to have applications, and then by mid-November, is that what we could be discussing?
Because we, we have the badge for the half of the year last time.
It was a long time, because that's why we can't wait to do it, because it'll be, either one, we'll be paying Jody a bunch of money to stick around and, like we did with Terry, then Jody's coming in. Or two, we'll be without someone for quite some time, we don't want that, that would put us backwards. Uh, well, this is a good start right here. So do you have any, does anyone have any other changes that they would make?
Jolene, did you have the, um, you have to come to review this administrator job description first of all?
We did.
Did you find anything that you think should be removed in administrative position or added or?
Well, one thing is, like with mine, the signatory for the city business. So if you have a city administrator, I think they should be the one going and transferring titles, transferring, or signing off on the audit contracts. So with vendor contracts that come in, they're signing off, and I'm searching through the auditor's request of who some, who was the, something of a city, I can't remember, but I'm responsible signing off on the audit of the whole city audit where I'm fine with it. But if you have someone in the higher power, I think it should be someone else that's responsible signing off on.
Do you think, do those require auditing?
No.
They don't?
No. And then, um, so then, like with my job description, I'm, I'm managing with the police pension. I work with Conrad Seagull, I'm with the bank. And when there's a pass thing, I have to deal with getting all the people work together for the debt benefits switch over to, which I'm fine with all that, but the donor part's in my job description.
So there's nothing in the administrator's description now that you feel like you're doing other than the one you've already pointed out?
Yeah.
And there's nothing other than the one you just mentioned about moving over that you would say, take off your plate and put on the administrator. Which, what, what number was that on yours?
It's not in mine. It's not in the, 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 the signatories. Yeah, the signatories.
It's not in there at all, you're just doing it.
Yeah.
So that'd be something that we can put, because it does say at the end, administrators.
And I, I need assist, I feel like the city clerk should assist in that, but as a manager of cities, uh, it gets confusing who's signing what.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think that should be clarified. I mean, there's some things, like she's attesting on resolutions and ordinances and that. I think that is the city clerk's, uh, responsibility, but maybe signing off on, taking responsibility for the audit completion, maybe, maybe that's not.
But my question is, Jolene, don't be on here, since she is the city clerk, under third-class city clerk, I think she is supposed to be doing that stuff.
That's right, I was waiting to see what came out of this discussion, but I agree. I think there is a specific description within the third-class city code of exactly what your, Jolene's duties are. And quite honestly, I'd like the opportunity to review that before we decide who's been assigned what. I, I think that's important.
I think so, we looked at, we looked at third-class city code, and where it, where it talks about specifically the city clerk is very short. But then throughout the whole third-class city code, there are references to the city clerk's responsibilities in relation to many, many other things that one would have to go through and find every reference to the city clerk and then determine, make that determination.
And the only we, we can do while it's open and while applications are coming in also, if we're doing that potentially, just removing our city clerk ordinance to further define those things and make it easier.
And then one other thing with the capital assets, managing, me gathering all the capital assets and that. Like I said, I don't see everything that comes through and spending policy. It's supposed to get approved by council if it's over certain amount, but there was.
Rick says he's working on that anyway.
Well, we, yeah, we've been discussing how to try and watch the papers, but that all gonna have to be part, I think, of the operation table and stuff like that, that should be, that should all be part of that.
No, no, same, the employee, the employee manual or?
Yes, and, and, and the purchases. Just, just a quick overview, right now, I think it's, uh, anything more than $50 has to be approved by the department head for, we're already, we're already now, and, and there's stuff that's coming through, but that has to be regulated.
I have not seen anything in writing, right? I don't know where that is.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But, um.
Somewhere online, because we do some, discuss, but $50, we might discuss, it's not, perhaps, we spend thousands every day.
Right, so that is something, and that's, and that's part of.
I know.
Yeah, so what has to be done is a limit on how much a employee can come in, give me a credit card and I'm gonna go buy stuff.
Right, we need, we need.
And, and one of the things that we look at, this would have happened four or five years ago, at the part of the day we, there was a gentleman that came up and promoted debit cards. Each department had a debit card. And if something was purchased at Central Tractor for $549. It was $549, put on that debit card, they went over it and bought it, and then when it came back, it went back to the department head, whoever put that department. The, you know, the card was, was.
Department's.
Yeah. Put on, so.
So you preloaded it, so that you couldn't load it with more money than what you had approved.
Absolutely, and that controlled somebody, well, I see this is my rep business, I'm gonna rep this. Yeah, and that, that would be.
But I think it would make sense for you guys to work on that, bring something to us for your thinking. I've been, I've been.
I get to sit down and have a giving on that sometimes, anyway, it's interesting. I think it should be part of the operation table for, I think, that should be done at the same time.
And then when I report you back, each department had its own report.
Yes.
And, and, because Kevin was concerned about the honor, it makes it easier for the honor.
How many times have you gotten something, and now historical improvement, probably.
Yeah, and that's.
We don't know, we don't know.
I think the treasurer's office comes to me because I'm in charge of the credit card, saying, where's this? And I'm like, I think we have to change this. It gets found though, there was nothing ever missing. But it's, but you don't wanna have a hard time. But it's the timing, and then it all goes back on me and it wasn't.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of hoops we have to jump through, they get stuck order or anything like that, which we're getting in from her anyways, but I don't like it. The way we do it, I think, is kind of.
The way we do it, I think is kind of backwards a little bit, but I know we we've been discussing it too.
I think that that process absolutely needs to be worked out, standardized um and approved at council level. Um but I don't want something to get lost in the discussion here, and that's the capital asset management. Um when capital assets are purchased, when there are improvements to city properties. All of that is management of capital assets and I think Terry had been. Managing some of that, but I think it's, I think it is an account and finance thing, I don't, what do you think?
I I don't know, I know historically how it's been done, I think there was. A lot of people involved with it, but I don't know who exactly.
I definitely believe I should assist with giving the contracts and. Or like the grants and things like, because I do have a, you know, once it's final, but actually finding where the pay. So for instance, the registry, I will tell you where the payments, where all the um grants are came from. I'll tell you who the backers were that we paid. But then I had to go into micro funds and find what, because they want the line, I I don't know what line I don't think, but. The grant into and then to pull it out, so I had to go in and do all the research to find all of that. Where it should have been right.
I think there's a better way it could be set up in the system, maybe to.
And you you can drive it though.
So that's another process that just needs to be, so grant, grant management, and these are both things that. Probably just need to parse down meeting and work through a process, system of grant management and capital capital funds in there. So that would be something to schedule.
And one difference is is that Cheryl was very good with her grants and keeping track of everything and then Terry. Did the humor where I'm in the mixture of both of them, so there's not enough time to make sure I see. Everything's just being put right where with the money lies.
What what have you do, um Jolynn, that has to do with finances in the office itself? Other than capital.
Just the capitalizes, the credit cards, we gave the petty cash back to treasurers, um. I work with the police pension and um. If there's tan for the tan note, if we wouldn't use it, I have to sign off on the transfer for that.
But I think we're a little early from what we originally thought. Yeah, so obviously we know that there, it sounds like there's some systematic procedural things that need to be. Whether it's a work session, whether it's in individual meetings with the council finance, that that has to happen and maybe just schedule it. Because you know, it's something that you need, I don't think your job easier, whether it's current, you schedule, call someone to schedule, so you guys can talk about it.
And let me just put on a record, I am a team player and will work with everybody and help everybody. But I think over time, a lot of things were transferred to the city clerk's office and that front office. Um and maybe they need to be pre-allocated maybe where it makes a little bit more sense now.
So schedule a work session beginning with next week, so that we can discuss uh. These job descriptions.
I don't know, like, no, it works, I don't know that Josh, Jim and myself.
I think Jolynn should make a list of the first steps, and we start taking easy ones off.
Yeah.
Solid, solid, Danny's gonna put, put on the financial side of it.
Yeah. So for this, for this, so I was looking at dates, um my thought would be, I'd like to. If you go again, if you ever change, please say so.
I have a question, number three on the administrator's job description.
Uh huh.
Shouldn't that have to accept police department?
Uh as as otherwise provided by law, and third class city code specifically says that the mayor oversees the police department of the city. I think that's what they, and Joel correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's why we wrote it the way that we did originally. Because it's it's clear in there, because Joey didn't do anything related to the police department as it was anyways, because that's exactly what it says. She would just probably probably keep her in the loop on what was going on, is that, I mean, if you wanna add a can, I don't know if it makes a difference either way.
Took you, I mean, I, we can add it, we don't have to add it, but we can, if that makes everybody feel better, we can certainly do that.
Except, just except the police department.
Oh, I I think it's it's fine, because it's it's clearly in the city third class, that's the thing.
Yeah, so we're good, so um.
No, I'm sure we're gonna run across something, but we have to start the process.
But we can advertise on this, we have an official.
I want a motion to accept the changes to the administrator's job description. And the changes to the city clerk's job description, pending whatever else you guys worked through, but the ones that we talked about tonight. And then I'll keep going, all the motion, and then to open applications for city administrator position. Beginning, as soon as this can go out, I would say through October twenty third. So that way, if we need to discuss anything, we have the twenty sixth of the meeting night.
Wait, to only only accept applications till October twenty?
You think longer?
I mean, we could all.
Extend it if we have, that's what I would say, I would see if you need to extend it. You just wanna go to the end of the month?
Yeah, I can go to, I can go to the first first thing in November at least.
Okay, so we'll just say through the end of the month, the end of October. The. November ninth. Yeah, nine, so we'll have.
All right, November ninth, if you'd like to accept application.
So that's what the motion is, is to do all of that.
I'll second that motion.
Precious?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlowich?
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Joel, are you going to be able to edit the job descriptions that the that we had up here and resend to the office?
I can take a shot at it, I would write the stuff down, but I'm not sure I called everything, I'm not gonna lie to you. Um the part with the duties in the third class city code isn't like a one hour project, that's gonna take some time. Um I can do my best.
No, no, I'll I'll send you the changes, the just the one, the brief changes that we just, the word to be able to advertise it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll I'll send you one.
That's fine, yes.
Thank you. Alright, light fest. Yes, actually, um Victoria Rosenfeld is the committee chair is here to talk to the council about the social distancing plans. And for Santa parade and Santa house. Uh the light fest would like to propose the following social distancing plan for the holiday activities in the city. Instead of a parade, Santa misses Claus, they arrive by fire truck to the Santa house at five thirty P M on Saturday, November twenty eighth. Santa misses Claus will visit with the children at an open door. Uh at the Santa house with a plexiglass or other cost-effective clear barrier half halfway up the door. I can't just put a chain across there because kiddos are gonna run right under it, okay? So something like that, so they can still see Santa for, they'll yeah, um they can still get pictures with Santa. Uh so basically we'll block off that lower part of the door, um Santa and Mrs Claus with where where clear face shields. Uh we will ask families coming up from the porch, they need to be masked, children need to be masked, now when they're talking to Santa. We will allow the chance, the children to take their masks down, to talk to Santa, so Santa can understand what they're saying. And um that way they can turn and stand in front of the plexiglass barrier and get pictures with Santa and Mrs Claus. Um there will be no physical contact with children or holding babies or anything like that. Uh the Santa house will be open two evenings a week, um five thirty to seven thirty P M. And reason why it's that early is because last year we found that from seven thirty to eight P M, we're pretty much that idle. Uh sometimes we get that five a date person, but that was only because they were driving by and they seen the lights on. Um and that's because, you know, parents wanna get their kids home, getting them there, so we think that that will work best, if not, we'll reevaluate it for next year. Uh parents and children that would like an alternative to the Santa house coming to to do a face-to-face, we're gonna offer FaceTime, we're gonna offer phone calls. Okay, uh basically what will happen is we're asking um that the instructions for how to do that, how to sign up for that will be on. Facebook, it will be on uh the Santa site and on the light fest page. We we are asking, and I don't know if this can be added to the city webpage, um this is what we're doing, this is the phone number. Christine and myself will field all of those calls, the city clerk's office will not need to take that in that. Um we we want the scheduling for that, and what we're gonna do is set up our guest room in our house of Santa Wonderland. And it'll be a backdrop and it'll look like we're sitting in a pool, and then we'll we'll do the the phone calls that way. Um unfortunately, this year we cannot do the Santa Claus, that would be animal pictures and things, we're not doing that this year. And a very unfortunate situation, we cannot do the sensory Santa, which is very well received, and that was for kids with disabilities, but. We just, we just can't do that this year, but they can definitely sign up for phone calls and. Um Santa Mrs Claus is working closely with the ARC, um because they're gonna, they're gonna be doing an outside event thing. So we have offered to go there and we will make a presence and hand gifts to each car, um so we're still extending that out to the community. Um Christmas Eve, uh each year we like to add something new, so this year on Christmas Eve, what we're gonna do. Is do a live storytime on Facebook, okay? So we're gonna offer two sessions, one at two P M and one at six P M. We're offering it two P M because we know there's families in the city that do not have internet access at their home. So what we're going to do is gather those hotspots in the city and post those so that families can go sit outside those hotspots during the day. Uh we will or want to them during the day to be able to access this. I have called and talked to Melissa at the Dagenstein Library, unfortunately, they're all purpose rooms, it's half full of things that they have to quarantine. Um she'd only be, we'd only be allowed to have like twelve kiddos in the room, I don't wanna do that, um it's only twelve kiddos, we have a lot more kiddos in town. So by offering up those hotspots, I know outside the Dagenstein, they have like three areas there, I know outside United Way. So we'll list all those hotspots so that the citizens know where to go, and then we'll do a six P M live Christmas Eve. I thought it would be a great tradition to start so that families have something to do to keep the kiddos occupied on Christmas Eve. But but how cool is that to gather the family around the laptop, iPad or whatever, and Mrs Claus will read, Santa will read and we'll follow them. Because Santa's gotta get toys with them, and we'll deal with those questions, I'll let the parents deal with those questions, anyway. So just for for reference, I have, I did call and talk to the mall, the mall's not having a parade, they are having Santa, they're just not sure what that looks like there either. Uh Milton in Northumberland actually contacted me to say, hey, what are you guys doing over there? And I said, well, this is my suggestion to the council, but I don't have a final one yet. But uh so they're sort of, I gave them my suggestion as to what we're doing here, sounds like they're gonna do something. Okay, so last last thing we have to discuss is um the deer display in the park.
On that, does the council want to approve, approve of that, that plan?
I have like one, I the, I mean, you guys have through it really far off, it's really awesome. Um the only thing with the the plexiglass and the stuff like that in the house. I don't know, I just know it might get me, like, I don't know, I very could, it might get me freaked out, is there any thought maybe doing some nights in the gazebo? So that way it's less, you don't have to worry about plexiglass, you still wear the masks, but you can do. Kids stays at the foot of the gazebo, Santa thought, in the gazebo, you don't have to decide now, but I just know. I picture, I know Mike freaks out just walking up.
Kids freak out coming up the stairs. Mrs Claus is the voice of reason on that.
But just be able to still see Santa from a distance, I don't know.
We can do the gazebo, I mean.
It's nicely decorated as it is already.
Yeah.
Everybody, but remember the business was not gonna be even.
Is the Santa house not even, is it?
And Santa, yeah, and we did think about, because the kiddos have to be out on the porch, so hopefully they'll pop fast. Um the only other suggestion I had was for them, not me, for them, I don't care about me, where Santa is in a suit. Um so that it's not our concern, our concern also is because they're gonna be on the porch, so I don't know if it would be feasible. To borrow one of those propane heaters instead of on the porch, I think that would probably be safe on our porch. Yeah, I was gonna ask, yes or no, if we could borrow one of their propane heaters, we have it on the porch, so that way. Uh as long as it's not up against the side or anything like that, we'll make sure it's shut down properly when we leave. And it's cooled and all that good stuff, and we'll chain it to the porch. Um so that was my only thought on that, as far as getting around the bear, like if there's not something where they're gonna try to push it. They they just are, so.
You're only talking about like something that would be a couple feet tall.
Yeah, like down here, yeah, not like way up here and Santa's like, you know, talking through the hills. Just something because, but like I said, even just putting a chain, they're gonna, they're gonna climb under and climb over it.
You just can put something up that you can decorate.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, I mean, it could, we could just do it low and 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 maybe, yeah, we'll we'll come up with something that's not scary. But I just, I just don't want them trying to, you know, not that, I'm gonna, oh my gosh, but um but for safety reasons, too, I don't want kiddos. Trying to climb over something, so you want to approve this?
So definitely commend you for your efforts, put it in there, um it seemed like you really did some research. Bring that to other people as well, to see whether they are.
It's a committee, so technically it's almost, which is not there.
But they're they're asking for the council.
You want us to make a motion?
I, you can, um I just wanna make sure you're, we're okay with what we're doing and.
So make a motion to accept their, so all these procedures.
Um the next thing I wanna bring. That's right, you gotta ask them.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Ister? Victoria? Um okay, so now I'm gonna move on to a different topic, but the only, I have this one here, it's because citizens have come to me, they have contacted me. Um about the deer in the park, and we're not gonna make everyone happy, but there are citizens that don't feel we should have the deer in the park because they're in a pen, they don't feel there's enough space. Um I can't say that they are properly taken care of and follow the USDA regulations, like bias does inspect our. Pen and and everything's on the up and up, and we take care of them personally every day. Um but we did have an incident last year, incident was handled, um however, um I'm. Bringing this to council because people have come to me and I felt council needed to be aware. Um and so I opened that, asked you to have a discussion and. Let me just add to that, the deer did sustain an injury last year, um. They get excited about noise around them, unusual noises and act activity around them. And last year there was a baby with a mama, and that was probably part of the reason they got so worked up, the baby probably freaked and then the mama freaked. But um they caught their nose on the wire fencing around windows, so since then though, Steve Walker from the streets department. Did put plexiglass up on those windows partway so that the deer can't get their noses caught and cut on the on the wire. So there was, so we did put something in place to keep the deer safe for the rest of the time they were there, I just wanted to make sure you be aware of that too. Yeah, so that's just the concern, the flow of traffic, the railroad passing, things like that, so um.
And the environment itself has definitely changed since the the original placement of these years, years and years ago. Uh more and more people were in the park, more vehicle traffic, noise.
I think that would mean for this season.
So what is the recommendation?
You know, the committee actually recommends that, I know it's been a long tradition, but the committee's actually recommended that we do a way of care.
Based off that recommendation, I'm making a motion.
Not yet, I think we're gonna get, there's a lot of people that have had that for a long time. The only thing the concern for this issue, what I was gonna say is, is the crowding around the deer, because you've done. You know, we've put in so many things as um as a city of trying to prevent spread and school districts so so much to prevent the spread. That's my only concern, is people thinking outside, hey, let's all go look at the deer and they all crowd in around there.
They generally, there's a big crowd around the deer, we could also put up signs, you know, keep, keep your distance, you know, just reminders around if you want.
I think apparently bringing the children now, if there's five, eight people standing in the deer, they'll wait till they leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would almost be for him, if you make the motion, but I would rather, the person I'd rather see like. Like an animal expert, like say like, oh, this is bad for the deer or something like that, you know what I mean, because like.
Well, Lain to bias, they're in Westworths right now.
Never wants a grant?
Yes.
Correct.
What is the bias, did they have, did they say anything about, have any um, any reservations about putting deer in the park this year or anything like that?
No. Yeah, and and when they, when that deer was injured last year, they just came right away and and picked up the the deer and. They didn't say anything about having concerns with us having them in the future.
There's so many changes already this year that. I know it's some small, but I think there's a lot of people, as much as there are the, I think there's a lot of people that obviously.
There's both sides, there's both sides, I'm just presenting to you because people have come to me and I just felt council needed to be aware. And as a chair, and I just wanna say that I followed through with complaints, so that's.
You don't have to make a decision, I know that though, right? That's serious?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Maybe my question is if the deer would be in the park, would you be willing to feed them, take care of them, or do you wanna pass that along? That's one of the questions.
No, I I mean, no, I mean, I did it last year.
What is your reasoning for for asking us to remove the deer?
I'm just, I mean, I do stand on the side of the traffic pattern, the railway and, you know, back there, but um, you know. And it is, you know, there's a cost and there's an expense that's going up every year, however, that is graciously covered um by the fire department. I have a letter, you know, if you continue, then I do have a letter to drop.
So we were putting deer in the park, you wouldn't be upset?
I'm lucky. I see both sides, I really do, I'm just. I see both sides, I really do. I'm just, you know.
I see you being, I mean, you made your moments, third ones.
Yeah, that's me.
Last one's.
I didn't.
It's on you.
So, okay, well, I can say I did what was asked.
Are you looking for lands for this board? I'll make a motion to put the deer in the park. Thank you.
Rechner.
Yes.
Bruschus.
No.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
No.
Reese.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic job. Josh. You will die.
Okay, next are the, um.
Man, just talk it for one second. As an addition to the motion, do you want to put in any caveats that with, that you're approving it with the suggestions, taking into account suggestions of Tobias Hamelbaum and, uh,
and.
Martin Prince and Christine there from, to whatever they want to do to protect the deer. You know, that would be okay with you folks?
Yes.
Yeah. And the fire department.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure there's time for them to come out.
Yeah, it was very clear.
All right, are we doing the resolutions?
Yes, so the redevelopment authority is up next. Solicitor Applebaum Kula is on Zoom.
Good evening, council members. I hope you can hear me okay. Um, thank you for accommodating me to be, uh, by, by Zoom. Um, I know it's been a little bit of time since we've presented, uh, public nuisance properties. Uh, but in the efforts of getting, uh, things back on track and, um, being, uh, in a timely fashion with our public nuisance property review. The redevelopment authority, uh, reviewed, uh, recommendations from the code office. Um, and I have a series, again, since it's been a little while, our, our sequence has been in the past to add any public nuisance properties that needed to be added to the list. Um, and then talk about properties that need to be removed from the list. And then at the end, there will be a resolution to, uh, confirm the new, uh, public nuisance property list that then is, uh, posted publicly, uh, uh, in the hallway at City Hall. Uh, so the, the very first resolution, and there are a total of five here, uh, the first being for the, um, addition of public nuisance properties. Uh, there are three that are being added, uh, 244, 246 Church Street, 347 South Fourth Street, 813 North Fifth Street. Um, these are the ones that are being recommended to be added to the list. And I would just note, um, I know that this has come up periodically in the past. Uh, whenever the property is occupied, uh, it remains a city property and doesn't continue on to, uh, be covered by the redevelopment authority. We do have that case with the 244, 246 Church Street. It is an occupied rental property that has, uh, multiple violations. The resolution that you have before you, resolution 33, um, is, uh, for those additions and just to highlight a few points. Um, it, uh, addresses the fact that these, uh, three properties, um, have been, uh, violating the Boca Code standards. Um, and the city council, as the Board of Health, uh, is able to act formally to, um, declare them, uh, public nuisance properties. This also allows, under, uh, the Third Class City Code and eminent domain, um, statute, uh, the ability for, uh, the abatement of the public nuisance, meaning that action can be taken to remove any code violations. Um, as well as for the city and the redevelopment authority to work together to continue any eminent domain proceedings that would be, uh, appropriate. Um, I'm not sure if, I'm gonna pause for a second. Would you like me to stop between each resolution? Or go over all of them and let you act? Uh, how would you like to proceed?
Do, do each one individually, please.
Sure.
You can ask one more time.
We'll just do each resolution individually. Make a motion to have those three properties.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
Yes.
Ister. Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
All right, thank, thank you then. Continuing on, resolution 34 is actually to remove a property. Now, these next three, uh, removing properties from the public nuisance, um, list, uh, signifies that the owner, um, has worked on the property, uh, cooperated with code office, uh, brought the property up to code and, um, really, these are your success stories. Uh, not every property needs to go the full, uh, way through eminent domain to signal that success. So I just wanna emphasize that the three that I am, um, presenting tonight on behalf of the RA and, and the code office, um, are, are all of success stories where the property owners have been working on, um, these properties even throughout, uh, what we fondly call COVID times. Uh, and they are now ready to be removed. So the first of those is resolution 34 for 709 Susquehanna Avenue. This was first declared a public nuisance property, uh, back in August of, uh, 2018. Uh, like I said, it has been brought up to code. Um, there is a new owner that has been remodeling it. And it's met all of the requirements to be removed from the public nuisance list. Again, under the resolution, uh, the city acts as a board of health and therefore can add and remove, um, properties, uh, and has the authority to remove 709 Susquehanna Avenue tonight.
Make a motion to accept this resolution.
Bruschus.
Yes.
Ister. Karlovic.
Yeah.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 35 is very similar in nature. It is for 865 North Fifth Street. Again, it was declared a public nuisance in August of 2018 and has met all of the requirements, uh, bringing the property up to the, up to code and is ready to be removed, um, from the public nuisance list.
Make this into a motion to accept.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
Yes.
All right, and the third to be removed is resolution 36 for 912, 914 Court Street. And this one was also added in August of 2018, um, and would be considered a success story. It's been remodeled by the new owner. Um, I would submit that for recommendation to, uh, remove it from the public nuisance list.
Karlovic.
Chad.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Bruschus.
Yes.
All right, and the, the final resolution, number 37, again, is to confirm the new list, um, taking into account those additions and removals. Uh, because it's three and three, we stay at 37. Uh, but I know that, um, a curiosity that usually comes up is, um, you know, what does that mean, having 37 properties on the public nuisance list? It will tell you that 15 of those are actively involved in the eminent domain process. Five of them, including the one added tonight, um, are, are city properties. And again, that's the designation of they're occupied. Um, so they're be looked, they're looked at a little differently, um, but actively involved in the process. And the majority that are remaining are vacant and the properties are either, um, sort of limping along in maintenance or being maintained. Uh, again, considering the current, um, situation that we're in with, uh, coronavirus. Uh, so, uh, we actively keep working with the code office. And I know I speak on behalf of the redevelopment authority of being, um, eager and excited to work with the newly created, uh, BLIGHT review committee, um, as well as the strategic planning committee and, and of course, all of you, uh, to continue to work on our BLIGHT, um, program. So with that, I, I guess that was a long-winded way to say, I, I recommend or, uh, put forth to you the resolution number 37, um, to confirm the current public nuisance property.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese. Bruschus.
Yes.
Ister.
Just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a proclamation. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas one in eight women and one in a thousand men will be diagnosed with breast, breast cancer in their lifetime with a yearly estimate of over 252,000 women and 2,400 men in the United States. Whereas through research and advocacy, advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality. With currently more than 3 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas early stages of breast cancer often have few or no noticeable symptoms, making infection through breast self-examination and regular mammograms key to greatly improving management and treatment. And whereas we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, those who've lost their life and their families who are resourceful. And now therefore be it resolved that our Kirk Karlovic, being mayor of the city of San Mary, county of New Orleans, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the city of San Mary, council members and citizens, you hereby declare the month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I turn this into a form of a motion to accept this proclamation.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
No.
Ister. Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Um, this. As a male.
Okay, um, as of 9/28/2020, your general fund has $161,803.58 debt and the liquidated is $12,777.51. I make a motion to.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
Yes.
All right, you're up again?
I'd like to see to get an RFP for the non-uniform employees pension or actually 401Ks. And for the new hires, and if we can do it, convert the existing employees, so freeze their pension and that, and then move them in for a 401K.
Yeah, we have to see what's, what's allowable. Basically, all you're asking for is an RFP that allows the search for 401K plans to new hires and then see how that incorporates.
Exactly.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
No.
Ister.
Yes.
Will you're off the handle that RFP then?
Yes.
Joe.
Yes, the federal government is now mandating certain regulations for employees that have CBL licenses. And because of those regulations, we need to adopt alcohol use and controlled substance use and testing policy for the city. This is a fairly comprehensive policy mainly because it has to be, um, to include everything that's required from the federal government. Um, and most of this comes straight out of the federal regulations. Um, I did have some assistance in this by looking at what other municipalities had done. But quite simply, I think we need to bring this or accept this for the, on behalf of the city in order to be in compliance with the federal regulations concerning CBL.
Greetings.
Sure. Um, the federal government has mandated certain testing for people that have CBL. First of all, when you hire somebody, um, there's testing when there is an accident, there's testing when there is a uh, suspicion of use, there's testing. Um, all of which are required before they can return to duty. Um, it also, I mean, along with this, there's a whole database that has been created by the federal government that all CBL holders are encompassed within.
Is this okay for employees that have CBL?
Yes.
We can test everyone now.
Right, this is, we have to put a policy in place to enforce the, all the stuff that beds are requiring. Yes, this is a health and controlled substances and alcohol use testing policy only for those employees that have CBL. I'm sorry if I couldn't say that.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruschus.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
All right, so you can explain the pension.
So the, um, the uniform pension plan allows credit for years of military service. A participant who, someone who wants to elect to participate and contribute, they would have to contribute an amount calculated based on the years of service. So there'd be, there'd be a calculation of what they need to contribute to the pension plan in order to receive the credit for their years of military service. Um, the pension plan sets a deadline to elect this option as 90 days after the completion of probationary period. However, council may extend the deadline if the applicant is able to show a justifiable reason. A request to extend the deadline has been submitted.
So this credit is, I don't remember this in reviewing all the contracts. This is actually the.
This is, this is the pension plan. What happened was he requested some information. I think it was last year when he first came on and he was told at that time, you have to wait till your, your probation's up. He was asking, he was, he was continually asking for the information. And there was a transition period with Jolynn and Jody and everybody, and we haven't done this in forever. So it was one of those, there was a lot of lack of knowledge of what, what he needed to do. So when he came out, when we reviewed the, the policy and the, under the ordinance, he passed his deadline of 90 days past his year of probation, but then he's saying, hey, listen, I've been asking for this information. And I said, I agree. You have to submit a letter to the council and they can approve an extension so you get the numbers correct and then follow through.
And we have to think of the contract to allow for military service to count towards patrolman status? No.
No.
I thought that was added in there. So you're saying, what did he come on as? Is he a P1?
No, that has nothing to do with, that has nothing to do with. You're talking about years of experience.
And didn't we count military in that?
No.
No.
Okay. So he's just asking for an extension so we can finish up now that we kind of understand the way that process works.
There's, there's a city on Earth, so I have to do anything with the guidelines.
You have to, if you want to grant him the extension, we have to do so via a motion, um, and a vote.
And he's looking for how many years?
Five, five is the maximum you can get.
So when did his 90 days expire?
July.
All right, during the COVID, right? Did he run it up in between that time?
Not, not to the city, not the castle, but yes, he, I know he actively indulged about, so he was actively asking for information.
But he was given the, he was given the information in July.
Correct, correct.
He was given the information in July last year.
Is that in your packet? Is that in the packet? That's in your packet. When, when did he get off probation?
April, it would have been April 1st, something like that. April 1st.
Are there any other veteran police officers that might want to?
There's only one other and he's been briefed on it, like, this is what you have to do, so don't let it pass.
All right, so make a motion to, to accept this.
I've got a question. What was the, is it in our packet, the lettering?
Yes.
Like, you got that one, Chris, is the one that you're showing us, you can help me with?
That you sent the information from, what he needed to do at the time. So there wasn't a lack of communication, is that all right?
Well, there was, cause he wasn't giving the information that he needed.
That's, this is, this is it, there's an email.
That, but I'm saying, he was asking for the numbers. Because it might not be advantageous for him to do that, you know, it might, might say, oh, I'm not paying that kind of money. That's what he was looking for. And he was never.
He wouldn't know how much he had or buy back his time.
Direct numbers.
Okay. They never got it. And that's the numbers he didn't get until.
He wasn't getting it until, I don't, he still hasn't. Did he get them? He got them now? Okay.
And what's your opinion?
We, this is part of the police pension fund ordinance, if you will. The ordinance states, and it's part of the packet, um, that you receive tonight, that, um, a participant who is presently a member of the police force shall fire, file his rip selection within 90 days from termination of his period of probation. And I'm just reading the relevant part. If he is able, or he or she is able to show the city council a justifiable reason to extend the time for making the election and city council approves, then the participant shall have the right to make the election on a date after the 90 days of termination of the probation period. So basically, you can approve it, you don't have to approve it. That's the, how.
So the time here, when he came off this, off this year's probation period was during.
I'm not saying you shouldn't approve it, I'm just saying you can, but it's not a mandatory approval. And that's my clear as a buttler answer for you guys.
Yeah, I mean.
I.
I mean, it sounds, I just, I don't have enough, just being presented now, I want to read this again. Because I want to just make sure, we just did so much work with pension and stuff like that, I want to, I don't want to mess it up, you know what I mean?
So when you recall Patrick Conrad's city, like, I mean, yeah, what did he say? Okay, he just needs you to do the motion and I got the numbers from Conrad's.
But that would, that would put him eligible five years sooner to receive his max pension, right? That's, that's the only thing that I want to make sure.
He can retire five years early.
Okay.
He can retire five.
Which we, which we up that anyways to twenty five years, where he didn't need to, so that's already up, it's already moved that up. So he'll go at twenty.
Yeah, he's at, because he will be over age fifty by the time he gets to twenty, so I think everyone would have been over age fifty by the time they got. Correct one. So I just put him five years less of service.
My question, Greg, is you always say about past practice. Now he's what, uh, four months past when the ninety days ran out, yes, sir? Okay, next time is going to be two years?
Well, no, now that we understand the process, it's clear, correct, because we, there's only, we only have one other officer in the department that is eligible, I told him. Is if you were planning on doing this, you need to make sure your ducks are around and get it done.
Where does that person stand in the procedure?
He's still in probation, he doesn't call probation until next month.
And I'll directly add, when was the last time the city gave a buyback on that period?
Back in early two thousands, yeah.
It's definitely been over.
It's been a long time, that's why I, I mean, it didn't affect me at the time, so.
And seeing that the COVID crisis was here as well, delaying a lot of our information, I make the motion to accept this.
I don't really push bridges.
Are you able to, he informed at all the proper information?
So what you have is an, an email that I sent and the, that excerpt from the police pension plan was attached to that email when I sent it to him. Back in July of twenty nineteen, so, but what I understand is that the information that he was asking for, as in the calculated. Amount he would need to pay in was what he had trouble getting the answer to, which is why then. The cases that being made that he delayed electing the option.
When did he probably those numbers?
When he informed me that he has never up the numbers.
How long ago was that?
Two weeks ago.
That's what we have to do, probably got the numbers.
Yeah. So when I was searching through everything, looking for doing, so he's asking for the numbers. He went back to the treasurer's office and asked earlier. But then I'm the one that's supposed to handle police pension, so I was not aware he was looking for that at the time. So I never got the numbers.
And you have a motion, rather than vote and say no and, and not be eligible for it. I'm going to make a motion to table this until next meeting, just, just to be sure and then, I'm sure I'll say this, then I just want to take a minute.
I, I don't think one more meeting is going to hurt, if you guys want to do research on this, to make sure, and I have any questions for council. Uh, for solicitors, I don't think, it's not going to really have any kind of bearing.
Sorry, you're, you're only doing one.
I'll take back my motion.
There would be one more question that I see on this paper. If it is approved, it's five years that we can give him, but he gave us six years from that, gave us six different years of salary by that.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to find out if we're going to go to two thousand seven to two thousand eleven, from two thousand base to two thousand twelve.
And that's why I think the solicitor needs to review.
Because it doesn't, doesn't say like five years or.
Yeah, but he gave us six years of, of military.
Well, he didn't do, he didn't give those years because he had such an extensive, uh, time in the military. Me and Penny just picked those years.
Okay, so.
So that's not what these accurate.
I would just hate the city folk to know and not be able to do this, get a motion, table connection, get all the information right back.
Now, since you're in pension, my question is, I understand that properly. And they buy back time, they're supposed to make us whole for years of service.
Correct, he has to buy, he has to pay all the money and then he would pay to, to, to claim.
He didn't end up.
Huh?
No.
No, just, just, he just pays the pension plan. So it doesn't, doesn't affect it, they'll pay that in, they'll pay that directly into the pension plan.
I understand that, but. Like now you guys are paying five percent into the plan, right?
Correct.
We, the city have paid nothing in those five years.
So the city doesn't make a contribution in buying back those years?
He's buying, he's buying his time, that's it. The city is not going to add any money on this besides what comes out of the pension.
I'm sorry.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
No.
Rightner?
Just.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Then, Joe, what would be the process to change the running day portion of this, um, buyback option? Is this through the police pension itself or is this one?
It's you.
It's you. And I don't think, I, I think ninety days is plenty, I think this was just, there was a, there was a transition going on and I think that's what happened. Honestly, I, I mean, I think going forward, we're not going to.
Is there any, well, we can talk about that next time, but if we do that, that this is one nine one, this is one nine ten, it doesn't mean that this one was established.
No, there's no precedent.
No.
Every, every, under the actual language that has been adopted by the city for the police pension, every single case. They have to provide justification separately for every occasion.
Our construction occupancy.
Okay, so this is the first reading for bill number twenty twenty dash seventeen, building construction occupancy. This ordinance is to repeal and replace ordinance number eleven fifty five, building construction, which was adopted in September ninth of nineteen ninety one and any subsequent amendments to date. What we did with this revision was to clarify the definitions of commercial residential and home improvement contractors. Um, and then set the requirements for contractor registration licensure within the city. Um, it also sets requirements for plan reviews and building permits, sets donation bond requirements. And penalties for failure to obtain registration or license or failure to obtain a permit. There was a work session on this and, uh, so the council had an opportunity to provide input. And the draft was sent out for your review, there was a couple of changes provided by the solicitor today. And so, um, those had to do with, um, adding subcontractors. So if you look in paragraph.
Go ahead and put this over to Julie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the, the changes I requested this afternoon were simply to several of the definitions. The commercial contractor being a person who owns, operates a construction business, blah, blah, blah. I added the words for profit such that if you own your own building, you can do your own repairs. Um, obviously, home improvement contractor, the same thing, I added the words for profit. And, um, we also. Added, exactly, thank you, added subcontractors to the license and registration requirement. Mainly because a lot of times they're operating, operating independently of their general contractor. Um, and it's probably best to protect our citizenry to have them register as well, because they are required to have HIC. Numbers and all the information, the same as regular contractors.
And we have had, um, required subcontractors to have a, a license with the city, just, just make sure that it's clear in the ordinance.
So after what, um, so just for you guys, I have to agree with me, so for that. This is going to make it easier for residents, they won't have to get a permit for as many things, they're being able to do a lot of work on the property, this is going to make it easier for contractors.
Um, for example, what, what are they required to get from it now and there's not for this?
Yeah, so it's in there, um, and there's certain things that we're going to planning that are not going to have to do a planning anymore. Um, so like the fence, we still have to get a permit for retaining walls up to four inches.
Well, can I, can I clarify?
Yeah.
So, um, for, for fencing specifically, so if you're looking at sixty eight dash seven, section sixty eight dash seven, permit requirements and exemptions. And you look at paragraph B, I mean, we're saying that we are, per, permits are required in accordance with the UCC. There are certain exemptions under the UCC. Um, and we are not, we're not going to be charging for permits for those things that are already exempted under the UCC. However, there are certain things that are exempted from permits that we still want to review their plan. Because we want to make sure that they meet the offsets for the zoning requirements. So it's really a, a review by the zoning officer and possibly also the building official to make sure that their plan for erecting the fence or the. Or the retaining wall is adequate. So they will have to have, um, if they're going to build a fence, two feet to six feet in height, they're going to build a retaining wall up to four feet in height. Any accessory structures less than a thousand square feet and permanently attached to the foundation. Sidewalks, newer replacement located on private property. So those will be, um, a planning review, so a, a plan review. And there could be, there'll be a fee for the plan review.
The zoning.
Right, reviewing their plan by the zoning officer.
Yeah, because there's still certain things that are going to planning, but that we haven't finalized because there's still.
Right, and I want to point out in paragraph B above that, we had a discussion about sidewalks in the public right away, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, I was interrupting you, I didn't mean to.
Oh, sorry, um, that a permit may be required under city code chapter one forty five. Which is the streets and sidewalks ordinance for the sidewalks curves, newer replacement and cuts to existing curbs. So that it's clear that they have, we have to refer them to that ordinance for any requirements for their, for their permit and building construction of those. Uh, types of things.
Well, what I was going to say is that this is also a result of the planning commission actually coming to us. And saying, we're doing a lot of things that we really shouldn't have to do. And this is alleviating the need for our citizens to pay to go to planning and wait to go to planning. And a burden we were putting on planning by simply getting things done with the zoning officer or.
Or not.
Or not, exactly. Um, so this did come at the request of planning, it's not something where we're going to be stepping on their toes. They actually, I think, wanted this to happen.
And this will also take away all in-house permitting process for the city, so we won't have to be doing any permitting within the city anymore to all be done through. Um, and I see if, if needed through the UCC, Mike would just still be doing zoning approvals on those things as listed. Um, which is clear a lot of time.
So I'm good to just clear, anything under C, under sixty eight seven C?
Yeah.
Uh, the fencing, the machine walls, the accessory structures, or sidewalk, newer replacement, or sidewalks, newer replacement. They no longer are going to need to go to planning, there will be a zoning review or planning review by the officer and ask what's needed.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll set that fee before we do the summary.
Okay.
That fee before the summary. Um, and that would be all it would be.
It also has to talk about fees, our section sixty eight dash six, they're able to obtain the license as a contractor.
Sixty eight what?
That six. Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, the first A is, or first the best warning, it's over with, it's over with. Second offense, okay, the stop work order shall be served, the contractor citation. Joe, when it comes on your citation, should we be listing dollar value? And the next question is, uh, Chris, once they get the warning, how are we going to take? And identify that second time that the contractor has been warned prior to that?
Like, that's something that can be put in highlights, correct? Oh, if you guys issue a warning to a contractor, that goes into highlights, correct? Yeah. It goes into the.
It also can be thrown in the address, aren't, aren't the contractors listed also somewhere that they could be identified? To be identified as, but that's how it is for Chris, we have a contractor module on highlights, okay, that, that note can go way into this file on. So if he's warned this year, we hear the dialogue, he comes back and says, I forgot, doesn't apply.
Second offense, it doesn't have a timeline, Glenn.
I should, should, no.
No, and Jim, that is found under sixty dash thirteen violations and penalties. The citation is defined as a fine of not more than a thousand dollars for a term of not exceeding ninety days. Or, no, no, it's fine, it's just, I had a fine of myself, so, it's on the back, back.
And it's just because.
The district magistrate, yes.
I'm making a motion to pass that.
I'll say. All right, so Rashid motion, second right there, Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Nice to, yes, because now on Miller Street, over to the extension, almost three extension. This authority is running a wire, sort of wire through there, we had already signed six months ago, whatever it was, a year ago. On the private property owners, testing it, they finally worked out the details, often changing our end and my right goal, all that.
Yeah.
No, I mean, yes, you're right, nothing, sorry. I'm filing my email.
One thing we have to do is pre-sign this. Maybe that's one of the.
Sorry. Ister?
Yes.
He Precious?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
From Precious period.
Uh, I just want to, I just want to pay this the next meeting, because Steve and I are still getting more information about this. I mean, I know the deadline is in October fifteenth, the meeting, our next meeting before that, so. We just want to figure out, um. Right now, we're maintenance, not maintaining, maintaining that, we just want to make sure there's nothing, any other training on that, like we just want to make sure we can do it before. Same as a contract.
So there's period actively in the city, because I've seen there are trucks driving around and making that, you're four street.
Yeah, four chats with the rat now. Like I said, in the past, like we've been doing the main, and we just want to make sure.
There's certain things that have to be done by trial, but there are things that DPW can do themselves.
Yeah.
They need to make sure that they're, we're not overlapping, okay, where services that we don't need.
Yeah, okay, so that's why we just want to cross the Ts and not that.
Who's second, it's sorry. Karlovic?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
So it's the Ister.
Okay, Live Barn. Mr. Reese has reviewed the contract over his times. And what this is, is a company comes in, puts cameras in the ice skating rink and provides. Internet access to the parents, grandparents or whatever, watch game practice where the fee comes back to the city and thirty percent of it grows. Only on.
Only on what we sell.
We sell.
Yeah, do you want to, you want me to jump in, Jim?
Yes, please.
I pulled it up on my phone, I wasn't actually reading my phone. Okay, um, the, real quickly, I went through the contract and I just pulled out the most significant. Uh, things to consider in that Live Barn will bear all expenses for the cameras, the software, the internet, et cetera, and the upkeep. The subscribers can watch all of activities broadcast on the ring. The city would get thirty percent of only those memberships generated using a city code, not all memberships for the ring. So point being, we'll be issued a code and everybody who enters that code when they buy Live Barn streaming will, then we'll get thirty percent of it. If they don't enter that code, we won't get thirty percent of it, okay? So that's the only money we would be receiving from Live Barn is when people enter that code to purchase. Live Barn will own all the film content. The term of the contract is six years, but may terminate it at any time for any reason with ninety days notice. The other important thing is if the city terminates the contract, let's say we terminated after two years. We can't somebody, hire somebody else to do the same thing or enter contract with somebody else for four more years. So there's a six-year period there that we are stuck with Live Barn. And I'm not against that, I'm just saying that's how it works. The Live Barn would post notices of videotaping for privacy reasons. And we would agree to provide a person to do various marketing for Live Barn, okay? Uh, not full time or anything, but somebody's going to have to do some stuff for Live Barn under this. What's that?
To let the public know that this is happening.
Yeah, basically, yeah, and we put it on our website and put it on the ring website or whatever.
So a question about the owning the film content.
Yes.
So, so we have minor leagues there, trying, but we want to get the video put on the city website. So now we're not allowed to, but that's.
Well, you have to ask for permission.
They're probably going to sell you.
They might sell it to you or they might give it to you if asked for permission, I don't know.
That's what I don't like, because the borderline, this completely, how, what they come and do this, I think it's a great idea for the city. I agree with you, but I think we should have access to the film content for our own advertising.
Well, I think, by now they're getting to us and we promoting on our webpage.
Well, I think, by now they're getting to us and we promoting on our webpage, just want to increase their volume of usage.
For sure, that's the idea.
No, I'm talking about like the actual video footage itself, because they're setting up the cameras, they're going to be recording the ice strength, okay? But if we want to advertise, maybe there is a special event at the ice, and they have all this, these, the film and everything recorded. Now we have to go through them, get the permission, or actually buy the content to use it on our own, where you can pay for your own cameras. I don't think that you're going to be one of the, for maybe one or two off things to go out and buy all your camera footage. But is it hurt to ask these people, well, if you can help the profession, or if you can help the.
The, here's my answer, it doesn't hurt at all, I think it's a good idea. The only issue is we may be, and Jim can answer this better than I can, but we may be running into a put up or shut up, yeah, um, and I'm saying that, both in respect, obviously, but we may have some issues with the hockey starting. Um, if we try to wait and negotiate.
When we pass with the caveat that we just want to ask them and they can say.
We're not asking tomorrow morning, I'm going to be asking.
Right, but we could, we could still pass it with the, the, the assumption that we're going to have for the, the authority to get that video, and they can say, no.
No, no, that's not the sell of the footage.
No, 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 I get it.
It's for our own advertising, we need to. I have a question, is it only streaming live, or can a subscriber view a game from the past?
It doesn't say in the contract, I don't know.
Because if, if they did, you could always continue to point them to, you can see all this, you can point them from our website, and if they buy a subscription using our code, we get that thirty percent from their subscription.
I just want to make sure all of the hockey teams have that too.
Well, it's currently put in their contracts. In those hockey contracts.
I see what you're saying, if you want to do.
That they will, if anybody that wants to purchase Live Barn, use our.
Well, actually, that's, they're going to do that because they're looking at the revenue, revenue coming back to the state, they don't want that.
But, but we don't, if we put that, and I don't know, is, 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 uh, Bucknell and Sussman are still going to use the ice?
Well, well, Sussman's part of coming back to practice.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, like Chris mentioned, it's a situation where we're going to get in the camera business.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with the understanding that in the morning, Jim's going to ask for the ability to access the video for our own.
Yes, the question. So, with that, what if Jolynn decides to go in with the city Facebook Live? Put it on the Facebook Live.
Not even be able to do anything, just because that's our own event. Can you, my question, if there are people paying for it, why can't she walk in every single time?
It doesn't, it doesn't say we can't, that we're prohibited, but the same thing did occur to me, um, that we should, well, if it's not in there, we're okay, but quite honestly, it's not clear that we're allowed to tape our own stuff, okay? It's. Well, they're taping anything they want at this rate, it's not just hockey, they can tape.
When you say no, there's something that we don't want to see.
Yeah, you can blackout.
Yeah, we can blackout, we can blackout, yes, so if we have a private party or, you know, somebody, whatever, you can black it out so that nobody can see it, absolutely.
But then we can just black out and then go and make the block.
Right, right. There's nothing in here that says we're prohibited from filming our own stuff, yeah. That interview.
I'll slide it out of my question, I can hear this, if you come back and say no.
It doesn't matter, I think you got to do it, if they say, wow, no, we're going to take thirty percent to do it. If you want to do it, you buy your own camera.
Or use your phones. iPads and phones work great at this point.
Karlovic?
Yeah.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Ister?
Tell them Roche is sitting there.
Alright, this is the first one to bring this up, to think about going to moving forward, that obviously, uh, our city clerk and administrator are busy doing their own personal things for the city. I just think we should think about hiring, not, well, hiring someone to promote our events, to build on, to build on the events that we have, and possibly get more events. Like, for example, the New Year's Eve, obviously, big success, let's go bigger with it, have somebody like, that's their job, like, alright, how can you make this bigger? Uh, advertise, see, like, for example, the riverfront, what can we do, what more events can we do there? Partner with these, our different organizations to bring people into the city, so they say, hey, there's stuff going on here. And like I said, with the Live Barn, they could promote that, so how much more investment going up there, stuff like that. That's just something I just want to bring up for discussion, if, I don't know, if anyone's going to put any input. I mean, Joe, I'm not pulling fingers.
No, they're saying, hey.
I'm just saying, if you have time to sit around and say, alright, let's, let's think of ideas.
It's something that, um, city clerk and I have discussed many times, that, um, we don't have the time, there's, at that front office, my office is so busy, that we really don't have the time that we would like to devote. There are many good ideas for things that we could do to have activities, and I know that I talked with, um, street supervisor, uh, Steve Welker about a lot of ideas, activate that riverfront, have weekly music, whatever, but we don't have the capacity to get that going, and I think it could be a good thing for the city, but I think you put out like a request for proposals, maybe.
I wouldn't hire him, but only because, an SRI, we throw plenty of events without having to pay, like, the staff, resources, they, they help, but it's supposed to be separated. To me, this is a perfect opportunity for that friends of the city of center.
Ah, that was the other thing I was going to bring up.
That is who should be handling all of our events, the friends group, ones that, you know, are, are event organizers, but I do agree.
No, I get that.
It needs to be designated, who's handling what, or we have a, we have a parks and recreation, I mean, recreation events should be going through the parks and recreation board.
But I'm saying, well, let's say parks and rec or SRI, what's the city getting on the back end of it, like, for example, I'm not saying that they don't do good events, but, for example, the riverfront, we set, streets set up or streets tear down or some of the ball field, they set up, tear down, we're getting nothing on the back end, it's just costing the city money, or great events will get you wrong. But it's just costing the city money, like, now. Well, I mean, the ones that we, for like, for example, we have vendors, that stuff, that money goes back to the city to promote the next bigger event. So like, if you do stuff down by the river, all that money that we collect went back to the city, like, stuff for New Year's Eve, all that money goes back to the city itself. They cover the cost and to bring in the next thing for the city.
Six years ago, Jim, seven years ago, the top, top local promoter about police stuff like that, um, they wanted, um, over the percentage of the gate, and they wanted twelve thousand, twelve thousand upfront. But, uh,
Money just didn't work.
But if, if they were to add, that's why we moved Wine Fest to SRI. That was originally going to be a city event, but so we promoted it and stuff like that, but the positive, the, the, the plus side of that is we have a promoter, they're providing, they're providing all the help.
Yeah.
The promoter, the promoter is paying.
Exactly, it comes out of whatever they bring in, and based off of a, let's say, percentage, for example, obviously, if a person's hungry to make more money, they're going to try to bring in more stuff to grow the city, bring people in. So it's just something to talk about, like, you, you have to be careful too, that you get bigger events that are under the city's name, the city are throwing.
You may catch backlash from public, because then you're paying for insurance policies, the taxpayer money to fund the events that maybe not everyone in the city wants. If you do it through the friends group, and the friends group follows their own money, they are the ones that advertise the event, pull the money in, and then they pay for the insurance for the events, they have liability, things like that, or potentially could fall in, I don't know, they probably get that insurance possibly through the organization.
In, it, follow up on that friend, so, suggestion, so there was a suggestion to create this five oh one C three. Don't know if anybody knows about you, they might, uh, want to ask to be charter board members at this point, but we have this Sunbury Community Partnership Forum, and that's a great way for, for, you know, a cross-section in between to be communicating about promoting Sunbury economic development. If there were a group called the City of Sunbury Partners, right, Friends of, whatever, then they become this five oh one C three, their, their purpose is to be capital fundraisers for a myriad of things for the city, and if they use events as part of their way to raise the money, they keep the money, but then when there's a need in the city, they would be able to gift that money to the city for that and say, we're raising money for the new backhoe, and so, I don't know.
That's a good word.
So, but it needs somebody who is experienced and, and, and really pull a bigger event together, make it worthwhile. And, but it would be up to that five oh one C three to find the person to do that, and if they need to raise money to pay for that person, I don't, I don't know exactly how all that works, but there's a.
It's a good proposition, but it's tough one.
Seven years ago, Josh, we promoted like, come in, put a big ban on the river, holding on yards, we're going to file, is that it? Our cut, only problem was they wanted us to put the money up, so if it sailed, we failed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it not, I mean, I'm not against the friends or anything like that, but, I mean, you got to try to do things here.
I think the city should be adding the event planning business altogether.
So how we, I mean, how's the city ever going to, because we, say we start a board, and you get someone on there, well, I, I'm just, just my way to get back at the city, I'm not going to push, there's no hunger to do anything more. I mean, there's this person, we, we, we have, I don't know if it's worth control, but if we can see what we want to promote, this is how we're getting paid. They're going to, I mean, this is just my opinion, like, they're, they're going to want to try to grow it, I mean, if we're just, if we just sit back and like, well, we're going to wash our hands clean, we're going to pass the buck off to everybody else. I mean, are we going to get, change anything different that's happening?
Chris, if you have the same conversation with in SRI as well, where you have to pay someone to promote it, or else it's just going to sit there, I agree with you, I just think you're going to have a hard time convincing a taxpayer to put money in paying for someone to do an event that, uh, a private entity could have just run. For instance, you want to do another downtime event, why not approach the library and do it, or United Way, or SRI, or Friends of.
Because you have a hard time getting volunteers in.
What's that?
You have a hard time getting volunteers.
Volunteer, I agree.
But.
I mean.
And at the same time, I mean, you ask how you're in the city, like, they want things to do, I mean, obviously, you're not, never going to make everybody happy with the events you do, but I mean, young people, they want things to do, young people aren't going to, I don't want to say this, young people want things to do consistently, not holders of the event, this month, or one, two, or three, once a month. Really, if you want to try to draw young people, young things in this town, you're going to need to try to do events that entertain people and to show, hey, we have a great riverfront, hey, we have a great downtime, hey, we have great establishments, you got to bring, one of that, bring, what, drop it.
Josh, I agree with you, I think, I think it's not going to hurt.
Yeah, I think it's just a conversation.
With charges to do something like that, because before, it was a good idea, and we, we were talking about running one event in one, one major event in one, on the river, starting in March and going throughout October. Uh, and, and, you know, just some of them, we talked about smoke and water. Grubs, biscuits, football, uh, stuff like that, Yingling was going to be there to do a, a big thing one day, but so we ironed everything out, got everything ironed out, it just kind of fizzled that year and never brought that back.
I think you, you first got to find, to do it, you didn't pay for someone, that's what we're having with, with an SRI, you didn't pay for some volunteers or something, I think you first what you're saying, I think you need to find a passionate group that's going to be willing to help with these events regardless, and maybe that's the person, or maybe that's someone else. And then you can figure out who's going to, who's going to actually be one of the organizers. You did my conversation before?
No.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
You could do an RFP for a promoter who's willing to take this on as a contingency, but they front the fees. And what I'm thinking is, there's that, there's a promoter over in Snyder County that's doing this right now.
Yeah, that's all share.
This guy's a little shows at the old airport hangar or whatever, um, and he is, now, he's not doing it on behalf of the city, but I'm sure he's paying money back to the municipality, um, for the right to do what he's doing, and there may be somebody like that or him who'd want to come in and say, hey, I'll pay you fifteen percent or something, I'll bear the costs, we'll supply the people, and you help us get this going. Uh, and all I'm saying is, before you decide to go to a group or try and create a group, uh, I'm not saying just the friends, I think the friends is a good idea, but why not put an RFP out there and see if anybody exists that's interested in that?
There was a girlfriend that approached us, I think, about her own pretty big camera, but that was pretty much, she wanted like, people's twelve thousand dollar shot money.
Right.
To help fund the first thing, but then the city got, I don't know, fifteen percent, twenty percent of every venue she put on.
Mm-hmm.
We had our initial cost was twelve, and we got that money back as the events went on.
Sure, and, you know, there may be a point that there's either somebody who's willing to do it for less or nothing at this point, in order to, you know, with COVID and everybody working from home, who knows?
How long you know Tom Webb?
Spike Webb.
Yeah, I understand that, right, this girl, this girl, this girl, she's a kind of a snow girl. And her roots were Sunbury, her husband, I don't, I read my mind, her name was funny.
Alright, so it looks like you can afford to.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving forward. Alright, R A C P.
Oh, so this we talked about at the work session, I kind of went over the highlights about it, um, there's redevelopment system capital program that has to be a project, must be eligible under the Capital Budget Idemination Act, and we consider it for the police department building project. Project is eligible, we just don't know when the next window will open, we would apply for five hundred thousand, we would have fifty fifty match through our commercial loan or other grants. Um, this would perhaps cause a delay in the start of a building project versus starting the building and using the funds to reimburse, we talked about how, if you're going to if you're going to ask for reimbursement of stuff that you've already spent, construction has to have been done under the, under their rules. Um, and there's little history, so that, you had that discussion during the work session, and I just put it on the, on here for, for record. Ready? So the grant writers report, so you have that, uh, in front of you, what's on the slides, exactly what's on the paper there, so these are the, um, grants for the city of Sunbury that he has, um, completed. Then there are some that he's finishing this week. Um, I'm working with him on the D C D multimodal for Brayden Street, um, and I'll be working with him to more tie that one up, so that it will go in. They're waiting for the Penn Dot multimodal, I think, but I think that they have just opened, and that's for, um, Market Street Street Skate Project. The H two O, I think I just, anyway, H O P and Small Sewer Water Grant, those are also being worked on and finishing up this week.
I guess, I guess we can pull with them, and when you get further updates, can we make it so that it's supplied, and then either approved or denied, just so we can keep arriving total of what, how, how much does he apply for, how much has he got, and how much has he been applying, before he's got an answer back, it's too early for that now, just so it's.
Yep.
Because they may even apply for over six and a half million dollars in funding right now. It's out there, so that's.
Alright, so those are the ones for the city of Sunbury, and then there's some for the fire department, fire police, and SRI. Any questions on them? Future council meetings, so, um, the mayor asked for this, we put on the agenda once again, in light of recent developments on gathering limits and the, and governors, uh, limitations there. Um, we need to still bear in mind, even though if the, the number is not valid or, um, enforced, we still need to maintain social distance, we still need to wear masks if that distance cannot be maintained. Um, as you can see, space in here is limited, there are about twelve seats back there. Appropriately spaced for additional people, we have since, um, begun to allow members of the press and also people that are going to present something to the council to show up in person, so that does, again, limit the number of public who could just come in without having, you know, no reservation, basically, so we do want to make sure we can preserve public participation in their local government. So, what say you on any options you want to be considered or any changes?
Would it be, would, Joe, would be reasonable, would we be able to do like an R S V P for the twelve whole seats? If you don't R S V P, you can't be there personally, you have to do this really online.
You can certainly do a first come, first served.
Or.
But the problem is not.
Like a reservation kind of thing for the city.
If someone submits a question, and that warrant them to be able to, like, they have something they want to bring to council, they can sign up.
Yeah, I think that would be the way to do it, that, that's what I'm saying, I think that those ideas kind of come together in that if somebody has something they want to present to council, and they sign up to present, then we're already kind of allowing that at this point. So, get them, get a list going of people who want to present, or add something on the agenda, and then we go from there, I think that's the best way to start.
Well, I did, I have a deadline for them to do that.
Right.
Over the last minutes.
What happens if you get, you have to take five seats open and twelve people, and you want to tell those five people, five people, they can come in, the rest of them can't, they have to be the next week?
That's the problem.
Why can't you just ask, and there's no number on church, going just, alright, say, hey, would you all, would you let us go there currently? And there's no number, allowing social distance, that's why, and then we gotta take all our people with us. Well, if you don't, I mean, can you just do a Facebook live stream? At that point, it's open to the public, anybody can come at that point, because there's no number in a church. If you can find a location, that's, that's it.
One of the problems with that is the separation of church and state. Um, that could be an issue. Um, no thanks, but, um, you know, you could have people saying, well, I don't go to that church, or I don't like that church. That, that's the only problem, you know, I know. I, I, I'm agreeing with your idea, but I see your point.
Why, why, why aren't we able to do a reservation? If they don't contact the office by that Friday before the council meeting by noon to reserve a seat, to make sure that they have an open seat and then they can show them.
I didn't say we couldn't.
So we wouldn't be able to do reservations. So if the public wants to be in person, or they ask if they wanna say, they have to contact the city clerk's office by noon on the Friday, Friday council meeting to reserve a seat that is available.
The problem is gonna be if we get forty of them.
But then, then they know.
That's first come, first served.
There's only twelve seats available that are reserved. If, if all twelve are reserved, sorry, we no longer have capacity.
And they can participate by this, via Zoom or.
They can still ask their question via Zoom.
Friends, what's your, what's your thought?
Are you gonna have certain times that they can call in, because people can then just call in and say, I wanna reserve the next three weeks? Or I wanna reserve, call in at seven o'clock, and then like, there's a certain timer to call in and reserve. And then would you be like calling very right off the top?
Yeah, starting right now.
That's what I'm saying.
They would have to have a confirmation from the city clerk's office.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think, I think if they have a question, if that's what, that's what the purpose of this was, if they have a question. They can't say, I'm gonna have a question the next three, four weeks on, like, if you're ready, you can apply one week. And if you have a list.
Priority would be given to the people that actually have a comment or concern or questions.
That could also lead to dissumenting of any kind on that.
Absolutely. You don't know.
We don't know.
But I, since this COVID thing, I understand we could do what we need to do to ensure safety of the public, but the members of the public community have access to their elected officials.
Well, what time are the hours pre-called?
I don't know.
That's what we.
I just, I have a question, since, I mean, this is going out of the, I mean, since the city shows support to the school district, you think we could ask the school district, hey, we'll use the auditorium, you know? We, we help them, and they, you think they can help us? And our community, I mean, that's bringing up the whole many people that social distancing, still.
There's no reason we can't ask.
But remember, we're going.
Legally.
It's inside, we've got a court inside.
Oh.
And.
You just gotta take off your stuff.
And we still wanna be able to do the Zoom, because there are people that would prefer to do this, whether it's.
Yeah.
The in-person options available. And I just wanna point out that I also am concerned about the workload in front office trying to manage first come, first served, reserve, you know.
But I, I think, I don't remember what it is. Why isn't it just, you have until Thursday at noon to be added to the agenda and we'll, if you're not on the agenda, you can't come out. Perhaps I don't foresee us, because we get maybe one or two, maybe three comments, maybe sometimes more. But if we get twelve people to sign up by noon on Thursday.
What happens if I start with that?
You have to go at all.
They, they would have to call during our business hours.
I don't know, like, as soon as the meeting goes over.
I'm saying there are times to agree.
You mean, you wanna know, we, like, for example, between Tuesday and Thursday from eleven P M.
That's correct.
Two, eleven A M to three P M. So that's, so you're asking, if we do a reservation, you wanna know the time?
Just wanna know a day, this, normal business hours, we're starting for, okay, so for Monday's council meeting, we will start accepting.
Reservation.
Reservations on the Wednesday, you have to have your reservation by closing business on Thursday.
I think what we're thinking, I think, just, if tomorrow, you just allow people to do to the next council meeting. And you have until Thursday before the next council meeting and you're done. And if you're not on the agenda, you can't come out.
We don't have the agenda final, we don't even have it really drafted until, or like, perhaps Thursday.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you, Thursday, you would be drafting the agenda for Friday to send out, that's why Thursday.
Jolynn, your responsibility is to set up the meeting orders, you're a.
I just think that's crazy. Sorry. It's just, it's a lot of extra, like, we've been doing the agenda and everything else for a year, not no problems, everything is good. Done super early, Friday, like twelve, now it just seems like everything's just, all the technology and it's nobody's fault. Increasing levels of difficulty because of the COVID, it's nobody's, and then just adding more and more to making the meeting happen.
So Friday all day, it's basically Jolynn and I are fi- are finalizing the agenda and getting all the documents and supporting documents so we can get them up on the website. So when we post that, the, the council meeting, and here's the agenda, and all the supporting documents are on the website. And then on Monday, there's still, all day long, we're, we're captive audience, making sure that everything is ready for the council meeting that night. Making sure all the things that are doc, are, are, are ready for your packets, making sure the equipment is working, um, and then throwing that, you know? Other things are happening during the day that I don't get up here, finalizing the slides, that you still wanna continue. You know, it's a lot to get it.
And then for the, the version.
Ricky, you're here tonight, she contacted Jolynn and said, hey, I have like best stuff. And then you said, hey, you can come to present, right? So, I mean, probably those into the rest of the year. And if people call in and ask for something to be on the agenda, Jolynn just gives them the permission to come in?
That's what we've been doing.
That's what I'm saying, just keep going.
So when you, when they do sales and they have them in line, can you not do something when the first twelve people that are here, they're getting in period, and then?
Might as well.
No, because now they've showed up.
Yeah.
And now they're not in a position to be able to sign in by Zoom, and they have prevented from being able to participate.
Yeah, and there's the crowding inside. I think you just go Zoom all the way.
Joe, what is your opinion regarding public attendance at the meeting from the out of what you're doing, that's all?
I'm gonna give you my honest answer, not sure you're gonna like it.
That's okay.
I think we're better going Zoom meetings for right now, honestly. I think that preventing, I think we're better doing what we're doing, which is if somebody has legitimate reason to present something at a council meeting, they can be there. Otherwise, I think we are going to have people mad that they can't get in, that they're not, that they're number thirteen or they're number fourteen and questioning why we can't go to a bigger venue, different things like that. But I also think the more people we get in, the more we are raising our own issues with COVID and it's turning into flu season and everything else. And you might not wanna go down that road.
Thank you. Yeah, just do it the year of the year, can you just make it so that we can keep our questions, just say it through the rest of the year?
And I already advertised for a mixture, so they have.
So for the remainder of the year, is that you're keeping Zoom and Facebook Live? And if, if they're in person, they have to contact the office if they have something to present.
Okay, excellent.
Alright, announcement, so deflation of the Memorial Day will be on Monday, October twelfth. Current Heritage, October first, from six P M, the Parades Memorial Parade on October eleventh, for the council. The next council meeting is October twelfth, at six fifty P M, via city, via Zoom or Facebook Live. Uh, any public comments at this time?
Go ahead, Alan.
I have one from Dan, you're gonna, he said, what's the committee stance on the Halloween shirt?
As far as trick or treating?
Yeah, I, I.
He said that last.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's clear, because I'm getting, we're getting inundated with phone calls of the police department, are we allowing trick or treating or are we not?
Last meeting was from what, we said, Joe, is we're just not advertising. We're not endorsing, but we're not going to.
Okay, can I, can I just recommend something? I'm not saying we endorse it, but I think we should set a time parameter on that night, on Halloween, say, like, six to eight, it'd be done. Because if not, you're gonna have from five until midnight, kids are gonna be out running around, knocking.
What was that, to door six, eight?
Six, two hour limit, I'm just, I, I know what I'm just saying.
It's the safety hours, I guess, it's a safety thing. So how would you like, what do you suggest would be worded some, not endorse it?
What a curfew for Halloween night.
Well, I mean, the curfew for those kids are usually nine o'clock anyway, nine, ten o'clock. But I'm just saying, set a parameter, saying, we're not endorsing go out trick or treating, but if you do, please use all the precautions set by the C D C. Be careful, you know, they're gonna do it.
What is, what is, what do you recommend?
I recommend it six to eight that night, no later than that.
Alright, I can put together something that says, if you go, these, you can go out between six and eight and follow these guidelines. Stick to people you know.
We say the legal issue, we say that now, we say that.
Well, if we're. Because the C D C is recommending that if you do go out, go to your relatives' houses that you know. Right, that's what they're saying, we're not, we're not gonna promote that, we're gonna promote what the C D C guidelines are. Maybe what would you do? In order to avoid any liability, I'll talk with Jody and we can come up with a recommendations for trick or treaters in the city of Sundory. Get masks, go to people you know, don't cough on people with COVID, and I'm, I'm not making a joke out of a question. And, and, well, and, you know, we are we are not going to have an identifiable trick or treat night, however, as always, everyone in the city will take great precautions to ensure the safety of our children. Or something like that.
So we, we, we're a timeframe.
Very precisely.
A disclaimer, I don't think we should put a timeframe on it, that's what I'm saying.
I, I think there should be a timeframe.
Yeah, but then we're saying.
You're saying you wanna be, you're okay.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me ask you, what are we doing to prevent it? We're telling people.
We can't kill people not to go out to people's houses.
Right. We can't do that. That's what I'm saying, but the time limit, at least you could. But if I say you can do this from eight to ten and no other time, then we are congregating a whole bunch of children into one timeframe, into one area, and and we're responsible, plus, we can't tell them they can't go any other time.
But if we can throw in there doing the nine-year-old risk.
Well, and that's what we would throw in there, absolutely. Why don't you let Jody and I come up with something for the next meeting, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Alright.
What other comments?
I got a few comments that came in on the chat. So, uh, Rusty Shaffford asked, are we still investing in and handing out challenge points to the good citizens of Sundory to promote our area? Are we?
There, there are a few left, so, yes.
So yes, and there are a few left.
True. I, no, I, it's been a while, um, but.
Yeah, with COVID right now, you haven't matured.
Okay, hand it out.
If, if someone has a recommendation for someone, contact my office.
Okay. Uh, from Tim said in on the chat, how can you apply to be Santa for this holiday ser- season? Is the city ensuring there is equal opportunity for all citizens?
It's a private committee.
You contact the.
Contact the White Fest Committee? Okay, since it's so limited this year, I think they may not need a second Santa. Okay, and then Victoria says she has, um, two comments, go ahead, Victoria, if you're on.
Hi, um, I just have a question about, um, if a business on Market Street. Um, my concern is that on the weekend, there was a band that was playing outside of a, a bar on Market Street. Um, the band was blocking the right of way of the pavement with all the equipment. Uh, my concern is that if there was somebody in a wheelchair trying to gain access to the pavement and making their way through the city. Um, how is that handled? I mean, is, do they have a right to block the thoroughfare on the pavement?
They, they just need to call and we'll make sure they clear the, the thoroughfare, that's all. That was Chief Herr.
Okay, and my only other question is, um, have, has the city had any talks with, uh, Northumberland County about doing anything with cell techs up there as far as the black tarps blowing in the wind on the fencing and the overgrown growth all over, um? It's an eyesore when you're coming into our city. I mean, I think there's a few things they could do that would, not gonna cost them a lot of money, at least make it look a little better. Has the city talked to them about that at all?
Yes, I have, that, that complaint came into my office a couple of weeks ago, I did reach out to the county, I got a call from Commissioner Cleveland. And he said that he was taking that on and was looking what they could do to, to make it look better. But I, I don't know that anything's been done yet, but I can follow up again and see if there's a plan.
Okay, yeah, that's great, I mean, I'll even volunteer to go up and take the tarps down myself, if they need volunteers, but I, I just think it's an eyesore. So thank you, Jody, for checking into that. Um, as far as the, uh, the opportunity for people to play Santa, um, we're, we'll, I will, uh, do the application like we did before, Jody, I'll send that to you. And we can, we can take a look at that, um, in light of the COVID and stuff, like you said, we are limited. But, um, I can gladly talk to the person that's interested and, uh, see what we can do, um, maybe get them on the committee, find something for them to do. But we, we will, um, you know, we had opened it up last year and, but yeah, so we'll, we'll take care of that, so.
Okay, so we'll have an application posted on our website soon.
Correct, yep, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Uh, there's another comment from the chat, which is from Ricky. Who in Sundory is happy about paying taxes to lock deer in a box in the middle of traffic? It's an outdated tradition, clearly hurts the animals, introduced a deer last year, and the women tasked with taking care of them expressed her opinion that she doesn't agree with the tradition. Why even ask her stance on it? They drive zero revenue to the city. I'd rather see a marketing person hired to drive real events in Sundory, I suggested that was a great proposal.
It's privately funded.
And then Tim followed up about how was, how was the Santa been selected already? I heard someone say there can't be a second Santa, why isn't this open to all citizens to apply? We've already answered that, we will put an application out on our website, um, by the end of the week. And then, uh, anyone who is interested can apply.
Absolutely, we wanted to prepare, well, she said, why aren't we working on preparing buildings to bring this, vision into the city instead of the event?
Well, we are, so one thing that we have is the, um, commercial property ordinance. And we'll be working on how we're gonna roll that out at the start of the year. That will be something, that will drive some improvements to buildings, make sure at least they're up to code.
The county has recently entered a partnership to drive, to provide economic development opportunities throughout the city as well throughout the county. And we look forward to, uh, working with them to get businesses here.
And also Brad's been working very hard cleaning up properties.
Yep.
All through the city.
And then.
On a daily basis, it takes time.
Lot of work going on.
Okay.
I have enough from C D, one that says, she said, I'm, being able to see like this on Facebook, and she also said we're doing a great job. And then she also made a suggestion that we, uh, make a timeframe for the Halloween event, Halloween, instead of a timeframe.
Okay, taken it under advisement.
And then I have one that's over there, um, it's from Homer, and he said, why don't we use the courthouse for, uh, like, um, the meeting?
We'll look into it, contact the commissioner. Any other audience comments? Alright, this meeting's now adjourned, thank you all for your time.
Yes, sir.